Montgomery County Board of Education, Director of Board Meeting Q. Senior and Third, 2018, Putlin Elementary School. At this time, the meeting is called "The Quarter." We'll have invocation by Pastor Ryan Levente, Fraser United Methodist Church Student Administration Leader, followed by a pleasurable allegiance by Jeff Davis High School, our school's teaching.
Good afternoon, everyone. Glad to be here tonight. I want to thank the Board of Education, teachers, and all the leaders here for your service on behalf of Fraser Church, and also just as a parent of two students who are in middle school and elementary school. Thank you so much for what y'all do for our children. Let's pray. Father, we just come to you today, and we just ask for your blessing over tonight's meeting, that our hearts, our motives, and everything about what we talk about tonight will be focused on just creating a better environment for our students. We have wonderful children that you have blessed us with, and so I just pray for us as parents and as teachers and leaders over these children, that we can be a blessing to them. And God, I just pray for each and every one here, that you would just be with them tonight through the discussion that takes place. Thank you, God, that we are not alone in this, that you are never, or never will forsake us, will never leave us alone, that you're always with us. And so we just give this time to you, knowing in advance that a great thing's gonna happen because you're in the midst of it. And so we just thank you for tonight, through my prayer. Amen.
Amen.
We do have four of several members present. At this time, I'd like to let you know that we do have a superintendent, new superintendent in place, Dr. Ann Moore. She comes quite highly qualified, matter of fact Superintendent of the Year for the State of Alabama, 2018. Uh, 2008? Oh, yeah, 2008, it's 18, sorry. 2018. Charles, it's not 2008, it's 2008, we got this correct. Uh, Dr. Moore, would you like to have a word before we get started?
Well, firstly, I'd like to say it's great to be in Montgomery. I've spent lots of time in some of my former roles, coming to meetings and things like that in Montgomery, so I feel quite at home here. And I'm looking forward to working with everyone, and I see great things ahead for the Montgomery County Public Schools, and I hope that we can help to, like, framework, to make all of those wonderful things happen. Well, thank you so much, and you.
At this time, we need the motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I made it to the revised agenda.
It has been moved and promptly second that we approve the revised agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing here none, those who are in favor, let's see if I should pass. First item on the agenda is to receive its information. We have the August, September financial updates. Recognizations, I'm sorry. Recognizations.
Good evening. Tonight, we want to start by honoring three Brueveter Technology Magnet High students who are now in elite company. He-robotic students recently made it to the 22nd in the world rankings in combined skills for virtual bodies. That's 22nd in the entire world. The top 50 teams in the world were doing automatic bids to the virtual competition in March. The Brute Tech Robotics team of Will Percival, William Sumlin, and Trevor Taylor reached the ranking during the Box on the Beach competition in Gulf Shores, and all Brute Tech had eight students and four robots competing in Gulf Shores.
Sounds like fun.
And they came back with five awards. More recently, 12 Brute Tech students and four robots competed at the River Region Best in the Zone competition at Montgomery County High, and won five more awards. Under the guidance of Steve Fowler, and I think Mr. Fowler is here, please stand. We've all known for a while that the Brute Tech Robots program is world class, and now we have proof of it. Please join us, oh, we have the principal here as well, please stand. Please join us in congratulating these young individuals. That's awesome.
We have time to demonstrate.
Sure. That's enough to give us a demonstration. We love to see the work.
It's before he goes in further, I'd like to say go brands, that's in my district, and it is a wonderful program. If you've not seen them at competition, it is a sight to see. You see just the innova- the innovative ideas that they come up and just throw out so proudly.
Trevor, did you build? Who built that?
All three of us, um, only someone like you said, but we're personally.
That is great. I'm doing these two boys some favor, even if. Next up, we have two teachers and several students from the theater, technical theater, and music theater departments at Booker T. Washington Magnet High School. We can access people that teach at country, state, or here. BTW sent 32 students to the State Trail Bar Theater Festival at the University of North Alabama in Florence. Of the 27 individual events, they earned 23 superior ratings and four excellent ratings. Superior is the highest possible rating, with excellent being second highest. In addition, Shawn Dolston and Michael Richard placed first. The Kyra Williams and Tori Carl placed second, and Victoria Crabtree placed third in their respective categories. The students also staged a studio show, and it received several accolades as well. The show, titled "The Other Room," and directed by Shawn Dolston, won one of the three Best in Show trophies. Also, Katie Marsalina and Kristen Jackson won, were named the All-Star Cast, and Trinity Ross won the Best Supporting Actress Award. Their teachers are Heather Liedy for theater and technical theater, and Katie Smith for music theater. And if that principal is here, please stand. Please tell us one more time, because you're so worried, to congratulate these students and their teacher for such a fantastic show, and a statewide competition.
Miss Pitts, and I wanted to brag like this since Smith did. BTW Yellow Jackets are in my district, so it's all Yellow Jackets.
Thank you, guys, you give this a good. Next, we would like to recognize our Employees of the Month. We have Mallory Jackson and Monica Cobb, please come forward. We'll start by talking about Mallory Jackson. Mallory has been an elementary teacher at Children's Center School for 10 years. She is an integral part of the school's leadership team, and is always the first to volunteer for community participation. She has also served as a mentor to numerous teachers through the years. Jackson's love and commitment to the school and her students is evident to anyone entering her classroom, and that spirit is contagious to the people she is around. She tirelessly goes above and beyond to meet the needs of her students, her parents, and coworkers. She would be an asset to any team, and her colleagues at Children's Center count themselves lucky to have her here. She's not present right now, but is her principal. Well, you know what, we're just thankful for her service, and can give her a round of applause. Next, we have Monica Cobb. She has been the Administrative Assistant for the Division of Student Services, which was formerly Student Social Services, for more than five years. She consistently goes above and beyond to support everyone in the division. With the district's sharpened focus on customer service, Cobb has been a model of what it means to be respectful and responsive to the needs of families and staff. In fact, countless family members have expressed their gratitude for the help she provided when they were seeking assistance. Her commitment to helping people makes her an invaluable resource to the district. They will each receive a $25 gift card, and our gratitude for their hard work and dedication. Please, let's give Ms. Cobb and, about as we clap, about Ms. Jackson, a round of applause for being Employees of the Month. Last, but definitely not least, our Teachers of the Year. We have with us tonight the Elementary and the Secondary Teacher of the Year for the Montgomery Public Schools. We have Emily Victoria Eddings and Zestlin Simmons, if you please come forward. We'll start with Ms. Eddings. Ms. Eddings is a first grade math and art teacher at Flowers Elementary. She has been at the school since 2016, and has previously taught in Georgia and Ohio. Eddings' inspiration to pursue a career in teaching was her grandmother, who taught for more than 30 years in Alabama public schools. Her passion is for overcoming resource disparities and incorporating technology into all classrooms. She has led professional development sessions at the Alabama Educational Technology Conference and the Georgia Educational Technology Conference on Communicating with Parents in the 21st Century. She has also led professional development sessions in Terra Nova Academy in Kampala, Uganda, and serves on that school's Board of Directors. At Flowers, Eddings led a professional development session on the Essential 55 Rules for Students developed by educator Ron Park. The school has now implemented those rules school-wide. Eddings also strives to connect her students with the outside world. She has taken her students to the Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts and the Montgomery Zoo, and also started a postcard project through social media that has led the class receiving postcards from Italy, Washington, New York, Nevada, Birmingham, and Uganda. She also is known for her classroom environment, which includes bright colors and flexible seating. Among those who wrote recommendations for her was a parent who praised Eddings for her love and kindness, and also for instilling in her daughter a passion for math. Let's give her a long, a round of applause, and let's have her present this on the stage. Our Secondary Teacher of the Year is Zestlin Simmons, who teaches English Language Arts at Booker T. Washington Magnet High School. She is a National Board Certified Teacher, and has been teaching for 18 years, including 14 at BTW. Simmons' accomplishments have been noted with multiple awards and recognitions, including being named the Alabama and Montgomery County PTSA Secondary Teacher of the Year in 2017. She was also named the Montgomery County PTSA Secondary Teacher of the Year in 2011. In 2013, she was recognized as the National Math and Science Initiative AP English Teacher of the Year, and is Alabama AP English Teacher of the Year. Wow, that was a mouthful. She was awarded the State Scholarship for National Board Certification in 2017, and that same year was named to whose who among American teachers. Her principal, Quisha Starks, who will ask me to stand one more time, Quisha Starks, applauds both her work in the classroom and her commitment to the community. Rachel Thompson, president of BTW's National Honor Society Chapter, and students of Simmons, says Simmons does everything she can to ensure the success of students in the classroom as well as their personal lives. Let's congratulate both of these individuals for being the 2017, 2018 Montgomery Public Schools Teacher Zelbina.
As you can see, there are many wonderful things going on in Montgomery Public Schools. Let us give them all another round of applause. Now, the next item on the agenda is to receive its information. August and September financial updates. Mr. President, I'm. Okay, we have policy, JQ Disabled Student Update. Dr. Catherine Williams.
Good evening. We have, we have a policy out of the Division of Student Services that needed to be updated. We provide support for students that receive Section 504 support in response to an office of civil rights complaint that was filed against the district, against the district in 2016, 2017. We had a few findings that we needed to correct as a district. So, of those was number one, our 504 procedures have always been published through our student handbook, but we have been asked as a district to also publish it in our district policy manual. Two things were highlighted for us to do as we updated that policy. Number one was to be sure that we make, be sure that parents know that in response to Section 504, that they are able to receive variance requests when a medical need indicates such as needed. The second thing was that we make sure that we have all Section 504 posted on our website, which we have, and that for any information that is disseminated to parents, that we have a contact name and phone number for which they can call in order to get direct questions answered, which we have. You'll see on the second page that these services do help us meet the needs for students with disabilities, and ensuring that they have a pre-appropriate public education, and that we do have a Section 504 coordinator identified for our district. Any questions regarding our Section 504 piece?
Is this our coordinator?
Our coordinator is Ms. Sophia Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Moore.
This comment, she had, she thought she was on the agenda. Well, when it was revised, I wasn't not that hard of a, she said she could not, from here, she should be. Okay, but she did not know.
We're moving on, and if you don't, and, right now, let's move on to board action items, number six.
I recommend approval of the board minutes for December 4th, 5th, 11th, and 14th, 2017, and January 5th, 2018.
Mr. President, I made it to that we approve the board minutes for December 4th, 5th, 11th, 14th, and January 5th, 2018.
It has been moved and promptly second that we approve the board minutes for those same dates. Is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see if I should pass. It is unanimous.
I recommend approval of the Personnel Report Certified Personnel.
Mr. President, I move to approve the Personnel Report Certified Personnel. It has been moved and promptly second that we approve the Personnel Report Certified. Is there any discussion? If none, those who are in favor, let's see if I should pass. Mayor King?
I can hear, I've weighed the vote.
Oh, okay, no, we have about six. Poses? Fifteen? Six?
I recommend approval of the Personnel Reports of first, Support Personnel, omitting S21, and the Addendum 1 Support Personnel.
I made it that we approve the Personnel Report Support Personnel, omitting number 21, and adding Addendum number 1 Support Personnel.
Second, it has been moved and promptly second that we approve the Personnel Report Support Personnel and Addendum 1 Support Personnel. Is there any discussion? If none, those who are in favor, let's see if I should pass. About six. Poses? Abstentions?
I recommend approval of the Expulsion Report.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Expulsion Report. It has been moved and promptly second that we accept the Expulsion Report. Is there any discussion? If none, those who are in favor, let's see if I should pass. It is unanimous.
I recommend approval of the Bid Report.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Bid Report. It has been moved and promptly second that we accept the Bid Report. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President.
Yeah.
There are some concerns about student vendors, not awarding certain vendors, and not working with principals, so I would like to go and register, and you need to check into that, and make a great pass of the force to act, and fly across the park.
Okay, I will. I, I will.
Are this the chief of business for us, or just the chairman?
I think that's in general.
I got some concern.
Some concerns, now, I, I'm not as well as mayor. In general, matter of fact, the commission brought my attention, also, let's check in.
I just wanted to go and register.
Oh, yes, those who are in favor of the Bid Report, let's see if I should pass. Okay, unanimous.
I recommend approval of Policy JQ Disabled Student Update.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the recommendation of our superintendent, Policy JQ Disabled Student Update, and that is sixth and on our agenda.
It has been moved and promptly second that we approve the Policy JQ Disabled Student Update. Is there any discussion? Seeing here none, those who are in favor, let's see if I should pass. It is unanimous. I did see Ms. Plummer come in, at this time, we'll invite to, by A, receiving.
You have a need to catch up.
Oh, that's the yard. Okay, we're going back down to the August, September financial update.
Good evening, I'd like to apologize for my comments. Um, I'd like to present to you the August 2017 and the September 2017 Financial Report. As you recall, the last report you got was in July, and because of some extenuating circumstances that delayed us giving you the August, uh, financial, and also September, we're still in the process of closing out our September financials. The delay came from us having to be out for the weather and other things that happened, and with August, I won't try to explain that, because that's over and done, that was the last part of our money that we really was working on, and having to survive off with our district. September financial reports, you'll find those figures are a little different, they may be lower, because in September, we end up getting ready for closeout, we ensure that all the coding is correct, all expenditures that were done, and also to reconcile all of our bank statements. We're just about at the close of that. I give us to February 5th, we will then final, we will finalize the FY17 school year, and then you know what our ending balance is, and I will give you the October through the January financials on our next board meeting. We will have a beginning balance, and then you know where we are as far as our one-month operating reserve fund balance, and that you really know the true balance and the true expenditures that our district encounters. So, if you, I'm not minimal in my letter that I gave to you, it explains everything, and on August, you will see what the F1 and F2 report, what those reports consist of, your assets and liabilities, and on your September, it also tells you the difference where all funding has changed. Now, we are receiving all of our funds from countywide taxes, from tax, where people are paying property taxes, and so, right now, we are building up our reserve fund balance, but as far as. fund balance, but as far as our expenditures, we're starting having expenditures that will be coming out of the general fund, and we'll explain that to you. Also, the general fund reduced from August to September to three point nine. We took that money and we put it in a separate account as requested by the board, and that will be solved then, so that money is taken out of the general fund. And I know you just seen that financial report, but if you'll study it and if you have any questions, please feel free to call me, and, um, or you can come by the finance office and we'll have a discussion, uh, with myself and Mr. Taylor. There any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Palmer, on the ending fund balance for eight thirty-one seventeen, you're showing twenty-one million, three twenty-five, three eleven eighty-nine. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That was, uh, the end of, uh, August. The fund equity balance there was high because we were still receiving annual funds and, uh, expenditures plus, uh, we had not paid all of our expenditures that was due for the closeout of fiscal year. So August figures are going to be a little bit higher than your September because in September, we started doing all of our, uh, paying all of our open invoices and encumbrances for the fiscal year.
I understand. Is that considered the reserve fund?
That would have been, uh, you would have had a one-month operating reserve fund balance there for August because of the funds there, because they are requiring us to have the twenty-one or twenty-two million dollars or at least a three-month operating reserve fund balance, but due to the shortage, you know, that the county commission and all has given us, we will not meet that, so we will be off, um, sealed with that reserve fund balance. But August just reflects everything that's in the book there before we do an overall overlook at the whole district, any open POs, any coding or anything that was charged erroneously to the wrong fund source. And so, uh, we start cleaning up the end of August and the September, and thus what's taken so long to close out the September financials.
And this does a preliminary.
Yeah. September, I put it in bold that this is a preliminary because we're still doing, we're right now finished reconciling the general fund, um, bank rec, all the other bank recs are reconciled except general fund has adjustments that has to be made prior year where I had to pay back federal to general, and all of those general entries has to be made, so it does affect the cash balance. And so that's why I put on here that September is a preliminary, and it will not give you the correct ending balance or the beginning balance. So hopefully at our next board meeting, that's scheduled, like I said, I promise to be closed out by February fifth. We're on the tail end of it right now, and so when I give that next financial October, I will bring September back to let you know what the final ending balance was and any expenditures and any questions that you may have.
I understand, Ms. Palmer, because normally you have to take care of all of those incumbents before October one.
Correct.
I believe that's the reason why you have here preliminary. Uh, it's my thinking that, um, once you present the, uh, January barefoot with respect to taxes coming in this circle, let's show a difference in what we have here for, uh, the end of September balance.
Yes, sir. Beginning in December, in January, that's when our general fund balance will really grow because then you, like I said, we'll be getting in all that property tax and countywide tax and, you know, uh, tax and all of that stuff. That's where our money really started growing, December, January, February, March, then April to take resolve.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you wish to add any other preliminary? That's our key word tonight. Um, as far as what the revenues look like from the beginning for us, the taxes coming in compared to last year?
Right, right now it's looking real good. Um, it's snowing as far as it coming in. I cannot give you an accurate balance because, um, today I received, uh, several checks, and so they were deposited into the general fund, but because I'm running during ten ninety-nine, it's been ready for this, and that's why I'm late, I was eating ten ninety-nine. But, uh, I will give you, if you call me tomorrow, I can give you.
I didn't know, you know, a lot of times we hear like it's going to be tighter than last year or, you know, the revenue is higher.
Well, the, uh, as far as the, uh, Janet Buskins office and the county commission, you know, they're paying theirs, and this, you know, what they're holding out, and, um, I check the spreadsheet every month and call them back and we go over to make sure. So starting in December, it has started growing, but they're still not going to give that money there. But, but as far as the county commission, the district wide taxes, the countywide taxes and property tax and all that money is rolling in now, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any more questions?
Ms. Palmer, I did have one. It may be a little bit off topic, so forgive me, but I did have a question about our, um, transfer, uh, bus loan. And I wanted to, um, you know, can you remind me quickly what the loan amount is?
Uh, the loan amount was, uh, eleven million dollars for, um, the buses that we got. We decided not to pay for the buses out of the food and loo so that we could maintain our general fund balance. We're trying to build it up as much as we could, and we did get that bus loan at a rate that was competitive, and so, um, right now, that's what it is. Uh, as far as getting a clean amortization schedule, we will get that to you.
So because we did a law, the matter that we did not use the food and loo, is that over in our reserve balance?
The money is accounted for, yes, ma'am. It's accounted for, yes, ma'am, in the general fund.
Do you by any chance know the interest that we pay on that loan?
Uh, can't think of it off the top of my head. I will email you and get that to you tomorrow.
I will, oh.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Yes, ma'am, I will. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda will be the scheduled public comments. Uh, we're going to proceed with public participation board meeting. Request must be made advance by the superintendent's office before thirty p.m. from Tuesday proceeding of each day. Request must specify the nature of events to be taken up with the board and the name of the person who will address the board in the event to the agenda. Communications must be respected. Discussing specific student or employee matters will not be allowed. Individuals who have concerns that are inappropriate to be solved in this venue are welcome to seek a problem-solving meeting with the superintendent. Immediate feedback by the board may not be provided. However, you may be contacted or called up by the superintendent or as agreed. Public comments may not exceed five minutes. The board chair has full authority to terminate remarks of each person whose comments contain personal attacks, exceed the time limit, or otherwise inappropriate. A speaker may be considered disruptive who continues to speak when their allotted time has ended, but has to stop speaking by the board chair or otherwise inappropriate. If a person fails to comply when asked to terminate comments, he or she will be escorted to their seat, out of the auditorium, and/or MPS property depending on the level of disruption. First person on the public comments, Miss Katie Brown. I understand she's not here. Secondly, we have Mr. Levi Gilia, less quiet. Is he here?
Yes, he's here.
Let's keep it tight.
Good evening, everyone. In Hello, Doc Moore, hope to get to know you. The reason why I'm here today is because I do have two grandchildren who are in the local purpose school system. The grandson attends Goodwood. And I am involved and concerned with anything that's going on in local purpose school system. I'm very pleased to tell you that I'm not a fly-by-night person. I started doing what I'm doing January twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety. That means that just a few days ago, I'm celebrating twenty-eight years for doing what I'm doing, and I'm as excited now as I've ever been because of all the problems as we know they are, which I will not enumerate, but we know that we are filled with problems. One of the basic solutions for the problems that we have is pray. That's why my topic is, let's pray. Now, I'm very impressed with the fact that we open up our meetings with prayer, but somehow or another, we've got to understand that we can pray every day. You can't stop people from praying, and I will demonstrate it to you today. Just repeat after me if you will. Help.
Help.
That's all we have to do is train our children, number one, to understand that they've got to come to the realization of knowing that they need help. A child has to understand that. Then the child has to want the help. Then the child must be willing to ask for the help. Then the child must be willing to act on the help once he gets it. So it's very simple. This is not rocket science. Our children need to be taught early on, even in the public school system, that number one, you need help. You can't get through the educational system without help, so let's get in the habit of training them to say, "Help." Now, I have a lot of fun doing this when I'm in front of an audience because the kids love to say it. Let me tell you what the acronym stands for. H E L P stands for Honestly Entreating Loves Power. Now, that's pretty simple. We've got to entreat Almighty God just like we do when we open up the meeting here, but it has to go on every day. Well, it happened to me when I was in school. I was a troublemaker. I was a preacher's kid, and everybody knew my dad, but one day I realized that I didn't want them to report me to my daddy again, and I needed some help. And guess what I did? I called for help. I said, "God, would you change me, please? Please change me," and my life changed. That's one of the reasons why I'm doing what I am today, because I know that anybody can change, but you've got to get some help. You got to get some help from above. Now, let me know when I've got one minute left.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. That's pretty good, isn't it? Now, if you don't have a copy of my book called Not Too Late at Age Sixty-Eight, I brought a copy for you, especially for Dr. Moore, because I don't think it's too late to have a strong finish for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. But let me tell you how it's going to happen. We have to come together and begin to say, "Help. Honestly Entreating Loves Power." Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one announcement. Oh, Ms. Tish. Is that Tishia Tosh?
Oh, she is.
Tishia? Okay, Tishia prayed, uh, implications of school violence on the aggression of school success.
Superintendent Moore? Welcome Superintendent Moore, board members, executive staff, colleagues, friends and patrons of MPS. I'm an educator of MPS, and I have great concerns. Tonight, I'm going to share with you research from the American Psychologists. It was published two thousand thirteen. The topic of this, this article is Understanding and Preventing Violence Directed Against Teachers. So I'm going to read specifics from this article. I can forward it to you at a request. Violence directed against K-12 teachers is a serious problem that demands the immediate attentions of researchers, providers of teachers' pre-service and in-service training, school administrators, community leaders, and policymakers. Surprisingly, little research has been conducted, conducted on this growing problem despite the broad impact teacher victimization can have on schooling, recruitment, and retention of highly effective teachers, and on student academic and behavioral outcomes. Violence directed toward teachers has been understudied and has received limited media and policy attention in the United States and internationally. School violence takes several forms. Some of these include bullying, intimidation, gang activity, locker theft, disruptions, disorder, malicious insults, acts of violence, acts of racism, bias-based hate, bias-based hate crimes, racial profiling, assaults, theft, racketeering, verbal threats, gestures, and property damage. Focusing solely on student victimization to the exclusion of teacher victimization not only results in an inadequate representation of the issues, but also restricts an array of possible solutions to the complex problem. In simplicity, focusing on what is done to students is one thing. Not paying attention what to what is done to teachers is another. Mix more attention. These are statistics. Results revealed in this study that eighty percent of teachers reported at least one victim, victimization experience in the current and past year. Ninety-four percent reported being victimized by students. Interestingly, nearly half of the victims, the teachers reported that they had experienced two or more different offenses by, by the perpetrators. These perpetrators are the students and the parents. This is research. Teachers' reports forth from the results. This is the implications and the impacts. Teachers often suffer from impaired personal relationships, work performance, anxiety, depression, lower efficiency in the classroom, physical well-being, and et cetera. The global prevalence of teacher victimization, it is possible that many pre-service teachers' preparation programs do not prepare teachers adequately. I'm going to go to the conclusion. There's much more in this. Violence against teachers is a significant yet under-investigated problem in the United States that has profound implications of school, for schooling, teacher retention, and overall student performance. This article serves as an urgent call for a national research practice and policy agenda for this important area. To prevent the development of student aggression and violence toward teachers, the following board agenda is suggested by the current knowledge base. First, administrators, teachers, parents, and students. Need to recognize the problem of the school-based violence. Aggression and violence in communities surrounding schools need to be addressed to prevent these behaviors from playing out in the classroom and hallways. Thank you. I do request a problem-solving session with the superintendent and other members as you deem necessary.
Superintendent, I'm sure she will.
Thank you.
Tishia, I, uh, I read this.
Yes, yes.
And I tried Facebook, and I'm not Facebook, you know, I tried everything if I remember. I commend you for standing up there. I don't know what happened. I, I don't know what's going on, but the fact that you have done, you have obviously done your research, you know, from one researcher to another, I can look at this and I am proud of not only your work, but the fact that you got up in front of all these people here and will stand up and say what you believe. All I'm saying is I, 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 I hope that we didn't make with you because this is what we don't know. We don't know the whole story, and I'd like to give you the story.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I may. Madam Superintendent, I know, uh, that was one of my concerns. I am definitely against violence against teachers, whether it's students or parents, and I'd like for us to put in place a policy with steps on how our teachers can protect themselves and have a, some type of training on how to handle hostile situations.
themselves, and have a, some type of training on how to handle hostile situations.
At that time, we have an announcement here, the weekend net work night will be held Tuesday, February twenty, February sixth, twenty eighteen, five thirty, Ruth Baker, in a minute's goal. At this time, the meeting is adjourned.